I'd like to call the meeting of the Cumberland Schools Committee to order at 7:16 PM. First order of business is please rise with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I'd just like to note that Chairman Salvatore is unable to be here because he's traveling out of state. Next item is approval of the agenda. Mr. DeMonica makes a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all those in favor? Aye. That passes six nothing. Next up is the consent agenda. There's a long list here, so bear with me. Approval of minutes: regular meeting 8:24 2017, special meeting 9:07 2017. Also approval of minutes for executive session 8:23 2017, executive session 8:24 2017, the enrollment report from 9:01 2017, the school police report from 8:01 2017, and the residency/truancy report from 9:01 2017. Pleasure with the committee. Yes. Mr. Fierrello makes a motion to approve? Second by Mrs. Goggan and Mrs. Friedman, all those in favor? That passes six nothing. Next up is report of an executive session. We met tonight 9:14 2017. There were no votes taken. I need a vote to seal the minutes from tonight's executive session. Motion to seal by Mrs. Goggan, second by Mr. Hess, is that right? All those in favor? Aye. That passes six nothing as well. Next up is superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to take item B first, please.
Right, sure.
You know, we've all been hearing a lot about this organization called Up With People. They have been really visible in the community and in our schools. Really is, I believe, based on my understanding of what they do, their commitment to doing service in the community and also outstanding performers. We have two representatives from that organization here this evening. Lai Kun, who I've met with several times, is from China. And Antonio, who I just met for the first time, like all of you, is Tony's friend, Antonio. So they would just like to share a few things with you. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Let's read one. Hey. So, hola, como están? My name is Tony Gonzalez, I'm from Mexico. I'm Tony Gonzalez, I'm from Mexico.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lai Kun, I'm from China.
So pretty much, first and foremost, I just want to thank you for letting us be here, not just like tonight, but also to the whole week here in this district. What is Up With People? A lot of people know what Up With People is. A lot of people doesn't know what Up With People is. We are 100 people from 15 different countries, 23 different states in the United States. And what we do is like, we travel around the world for six months together and doing concerts around the world and service in each community. We stay with host families. This tour is like a six-months world tour. We're going to be in the United States, we're going to go to Mexico, then we're going to go to Germany and the Netherlands. Last week, we just had the confirmation that we are going to have a last performance in Rome. We're going to have two shows, and we have an invitation to perform for the Pope. So we were very excited to share this with you guys because the same show that you're going to see tonight is the show that is going to be seen by the Pope in December. One year and a half, we had the opportunity to perform in Disney World. And a lot of people know Up With People because of the show, but also, we do a lot of service during the week. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we do service in the community. We go in the high schools, in the elementary schools, and we do, with the high schools, we do a leadership workshop. It's called Take a Stand. Or like in this week, we also had the opportunity to go to Boys and Girls Club. We went to a senior center. We do a lot of service in the community. All the proceeds of the show that is going to happen tomorrow at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 7:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, Saturday at the Wellness Center, is going to go back to the PTOs. I actually don't exactly know the term, but it's like the Cumberland School PTOs, that's a new concept for me from Mexico, sorry. And the other one is that it's going to be for the Education Foundation. Everywhere in the world we go, all the proceeds of the show go to a beneficiary. It's like going back to the community. These people that travel around the world from '17 to '29, we pay tuition to travel around the world for six months. And so it's like a donation of their time. We learn a lot by getting to know the cultures, the houses everywhere we go. We were here four years ago. I am now the cast member. At that moment, I was the technical manager. And we perform here, and it has been like a great experience. So we're just very excited here. We have a video, if there's time, at the end, and if there's any questions that you might have for us.
When you were here four years ago, you guys did great work at the BF Norton School. You painted a lot of classrooms, but there's this great mural on the outside that is just a part of the BF culture now. So, you know, thank you.
Today, we also went to BF Norton, and we painted a mural inside. So right now, in the BF Norton, it's not only outside, but also inside, the murals. Outside, inside, they have to do with the culture there.
One of the messages that we leave around the world with those murals is hope in different languages, and I think it's like pretty cool. The kids, once we were in the Philippines, they put their hands, and they feel that are part of that. And it's like, wow! And then when we come back, it's like super strong. I'm hosted now with the same host family that I was four years ago, and my host siblings were like, "Oh my god, you're back!" And now they're older, they can drive now, and it's like, pretty cool, pretty incredible, those connections. One of the things that we were just talking with Alex was like, now we try to make places faces. Now with all the things that are happening in many parts of the world, people immediately reach out to, "What has happened?" Our friends in Florida. "Amen, are you okay?" I'm from Mexico City. I receive messages from people saying like, "Tony, how are you doing?" There was an earthquake of 8.1 there. "Are you okay? Is your family okay?" It's like, yes. The same with all our friends in Japan, in Belgium, Finland. Everywhere in the world, something happens. We had a girl that, from Finland, with all what happened in Finland. She was, she used to work in the plaza where all the attacks that happened in Turkey happened. And she was like affected by that, and we get affected by that, and we get a connection to what is happening around the world, and the world becomes small. So it's all about connection, it's all about like, find those commonalities within us and work together. The main thing is like, that this, one of the things that is very important for us is the show because it shows visually how 100 people from 20 different countries, 15 different countries, 23 different states can work together, no matter where they come from. So thank you so much for the support. Hope you guys can make it to the show Friday, 7:00 PM, Saturday, 7:00 PM. Please come, the production is there. Not a lot of high schools in the world can say like, "There's a world tour in my gym." Please come, it's open. We are not Up With People like, "It's our rehearsal, stay out there," no? It's like, we open that for people to come if they want to see the production. We show them the consoles, the drums, the backstage, the costumes, everything. So they can see vividly how we work together, how we do everything. So thank you so much again. See you on Friday, and we invite everybody from the community to join us. And let us know how else we can support to reach that word out. And gracias, chao xie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to mention that, you know, given the fact that they are so experienced that conducting these shows all over the world, they're very efficient in what they do, but it does take a tremendous amount of coordination here. And this really, this is the first full week of school. So, and with the new administration, it has, you know, not been easy, but I just want to acknowledge, you know, like Cindy Shabbat has been actively involved in providing guidance and support and making this happen. And also Kate McMorro, actually, that whole high school administrative team has been involved in making this a reality. So I just, I think it's important for us to acknowledge and thank those folks who've given up a lot of their time to make this a reality. Mike, you're going to show that now?
Questions?
Yes, I will move on. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, don't feel obligated. It is exciting, though, I will say that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so if I, if I may continue very quickly with the rest of the superintendent's report, I just wanted to provide a quick summary of the start of the school year. And I did have an opportunity to visit all eight schools on opening day. And one of the things that is really interesting to me is like, the first day of school is like we never left for the summer break. You know, everyone is, everyone involved in running the schools are in such routines that it just becomes second nature. Both the beginning of the school day and the end of the school day, I believe in all eight schools went without a hitch, and were in communication throughout the course of the day. There is no question, as you all know, the only issues that we've had, and I would say that that is consistent from year to year, is transportation. There are always going to be issues. I talk with the bus company on a daily basis. I, in fact, would guess that I talk to them more than once a day, especially this time of year. So we know that there are some things we need to iron out. And once we, you know, get a better feel for the routes and, you know, all of the stops, I'm hoping that we'll be able to alleviate some of the issues that we have been dealing with as a central office and as a school committee. And so I just, I would just say that, you know, my sense is that people are in good spirits, and I just can't imagine, not to be overly dramatic, I just can't imagine that we could have had a better start to the school year. So I just want to thank the administrative team for their preparation because there is lots and lots of preparation that goes into planning for the start of the school year. And of course, you know, all of, all of the staff, both certified and non-certified staff, that do such a great job in helping the day go along so smoothly, especially for those little ones who are entering school for the first time, and those students making transitions from grade five to grade six, and from grade eight to grade nine. Those are, those are big transitions. So I think a really smooth start to the start of the school year. And the only, the other thing that I also wanted to mention was to just give you all an update on the facilities work that has been ongoing over the course of the summer. I think we're in really good shape. All of the floors, as you all know, we've mentioned before, that the floors are done. There is a rug at Garvin Elementary School that we believe may have had a little bit of damage, and we have worked out an agreement with the company that installed the floors, and they're going to replace that rug. One of the things that we decided to do as a result of some of the issues that we've had over the winter with, you know, pipes freezing, and all based on the recommendation of the project manager and everyone involved in the facilities work that we've been doing suggested that we put in glycol systems in all of the elementary schools, and we've talked about that. The glycol systems are in. The only thing that we need to do now is we're waiting for the glycol. So the, so the system is ready for the glycol, and the thinking is that these glycol systems will reduce the possibility of freezing pipes over the winter, which is a good sign. The community boilers are in. There are three brand spanking new boilers already installed. Flues are in, and they're being connected to the boilers. There are other things which I have no idea what they do, but I do know that we're waiting for expansion tanks and pumps that is somehow connected to the functioning of the boilers. And they're in the process of getting, you know, waiting for those parts to come in. And the goal, and everyone is confident that we'll get those remaining parts in and installed before the weather changes. And last but not least, and really important, I think, for everyone to know, that we also had planned to replace and upgrade the fire alarm systems at both Garvin and North Cumberland Middle School. The fire alarm system at North Cumberland Middle School is completed and in service. And the vendor is now working on the alarm system at Garvin. So hopefully, that work will be done in short order. And again, I just want to emphasize that even though the vendor is in there working on replacing the fire alarm system at Garvin, they cannot, I guess, by code or regulation, they cannot leave unless there is, there is a functioning alarm system in the building. So I don't know how that works, but they're very mindful to follow the code that guides that work. So we're in pretty good shape. A lot of work was done in a really short period of time, and we're almost complete with everything that we set out to do. So I don't know if there are any questions, but I believe that that concludes the superintendent's report.
Mr. Mitchell, any questions or comments? I just want to add that I know a lot of, a lot of work was done that I haven't seen, but the work that I have seen is good to see. So I need to go see the individual schools, but having driven on the outside of schools, I appreciate the work that was done there. I know it takes a lot of coordination and effort. You're part of the staff, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Next up is chairperson's report. Fiscal 2018 budget update. There is no chairperson's report tonight. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is report of standing committees. Payment of bills. Mr. DeMonica.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we did meet on Tuesday night, and we approved the vouchers to be paid for the school year 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018. So I'll take them each individually. So on a two to zero vote, we approved the payment of the 2016, 2017 in the amount of $170,610.3. I'll make that a motion that we approve the payment of those vouchers.
Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve the vouchers for 2016 and 17 in the amount of $170,610.3. Second? Second by Mrs. Goggan, all those in favor? Aye. That passes, oh, any opposed? That passes six nothing.
All right, and on a two to zero vote for the 2017, 2018 vouchers, we voted to approve in the amount of $882,634.83. And I would make that a motion that we approve the payment.
Mr. DeMonica has made a motion to approve the payment of 2017, 18 bills in the amount of $882,634.83. Second by Mr. Hess, all those in favor? Aye. That passes six nothing. Thank you. Fiscal management subcommittee update, Mr. DeMonica.
We did talk with the business manager as well. We got an update in regards to the 2016, 2017 budget projections. At the moment, as of Tuesday night, we are looking at a surplus of $46,544. But we are waiting on Blue Cross Blue Shield to give us our final numbers, and then, once that happens, Mr. Fignano will have an updated sheet that he can work with, which is amazing considering what we had to overcome in order to end in the black. So I'm appreciative of the business manager and his office for managing that. The second thing is, we got an update in regards to the Freight Farm's trailer that's coming. A pad has been built in back of the school for it. It's coming in September. And we need to talk about electric and water plumbing, sewer, et cetera, for that. But that is coming from the Freight Farm. And, you know, just so we're aware, the business manager is being inundated with these requests for the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee, the Town Council's Committee as well. So we're going to look at changing the date again for the finance subcommittee meeting and the time, so he can attend these other meetings throughout the district as well. And we got an update on healthcare. We've spent about 10% of what we've budgeted for this year so far, and that was about it. And one thing is our food vendor, Envious Women, was asked to come in and give us their updated numbers so we can see if they comply with our contract. They're going to get a message from the superintendent and business office about complying. If they don't comply, then we will turn it over to legal counsel. They're serious about getting that yet. So that was the report that we have from finance. From fiscal, yeah, from finance. Thank you.
Mr. DeMonica, any questions? Mr. Fierrello?
Unfortunately, I was unable to be at the fiscal meeting, but did Envious tell us ahead of time they were not going to make that meeting? Or did they tell us that they were going to be there, and they just didn't show up?
They told Mr. Fignano that their accountant was still working on the numbers, and that once that happened, they would get them to us. But we're now talking September, so we're giving, you know, I think it's 30 days, we're going to get them to comply, and if not, then we'll deal with it.
DeMonica, you said 10% of healthcare has been spent? Is that a worrisome number, or in line with projections, or is it too early to tell?
Mr. Fignano believes that's in line with what we have budgeted for the year. We budgeted a little over $6.4 million, and we're in line at the minute for that.
Big concern for the past year, so, thank you. Any more questions? Next up is policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fierrello.
Unfortunately, policy was unable to meet this week. We will meet in two weeks.
Thank you. Next up is achievement and communications subcommittee update. That's my subcommittee. We did meet on Tuesday night, and we had a good meeting. We met the new district RTI coordinator, the Response to Intervenger Coordinator, Nicole Baca. And we learned a little bit about, well, we learned about her background and her, how she's approaching RTI in the district, and we look forward to hearing more from her. We plan on having her back, I forget when it will be, October or November. But she, she was very impressive, and it was great to hear her speak about RTI. And she brings a lot of expertise to the district, and I'm looking forward to seeing what happens as a result. The next, the other part of our meeting was scheduling, which is kind of boring, but we were trying to lay out a schedule for the coming year. We'll share that with you, with the committee, when it's really finalized. We have a few blanks that we need to fill in now. Next up is comments from the public. Actually, any questions about achievement? Next up, comments from the public. No. Okay, next up, public hearing, reading of new policy. This is the second reading of K5, the appeals process policy. Mr. Fierrello, can you talk us through this?
I would ask that it gets read into the record. K5 appeals process is a new policy, which the first reading was just about a month ago. It was mistakenly left off on the agenda a couple weeks ago. This policy will just lay out a standard for how people will appeal any decision made by administration or the superintendent. This is a policy that is modeled after a very successful policy from other districts.
Great, so we're going to be discussing and voting on that later tonight. Okay, we have a public comment with this hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this policy? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment. Next up is old business. The first item here is 2017 to 2020 District Strategic Plan Presentation. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have
As you know, we have spent a significant amount of time working on the strategic plan during the 16, 17 school year. Dr. Peter Langton is here with us this evening and he and I would like to give an overview of the process and share some, what we feel is important information about the strategic plan. And I believe that Dr. Langton's focus is going to be on organization and process. And then I'll get into a little bit more detail of where we're going to be focusing our attention over the next few years. So with that, I think we have a PowerPoint or a presentation that we're going to be sharing with all of you. So with that, let me introduce Dr. Peter Langton and he's going to take the first part of the presentation.
Well, it's great to be here and finally get a chance after we started in August of 2016. So it's great to see the process that we designed and that you were part of finally reach. Really, I think it's more of a commencement than it is kind of an end, that our goal is to create something that is a constantly working draft that, I always tell Mr. Mitchell, every time I go to his office and I see the written copy and he has notes on it, it brings a smile to my face that we're not trying to build something that is published and put away, that is an active document, that's constantly evolving as things change, that it's built a framework to allow for a constant update, but to give a clear path on where we're going. So we wanted to kind of just start off on a little bit of how we got through the process. So as we started with the initial steering committee and decided which way, which direction did we want to go? Did we want to have a representative group that had gone through the entire process? Or did we want to have as many inputs as possible? The steering committee decided as many inputs as possible would allow for great input from the community, from our faculty and our staff, from our students. We went through the process and our specific goal was not to focus in, say, we need to talk about whole child and curriculum development. We did not have a, which was one of my favorite not haves, we didn't have a mission and vision committee. We didn't try to sit down and say, what is our mission? Rather, we jumped into the work and said, let's have that developed from the process and will we come up with a consistent theme? And right here in this facility, later on in our last workshop, Mr. Mitchell gave a great talk about a team that he had coached that was not having a lot of success, that found a way to have success. And he ended his talk by saying, the big difference was, we believe. And immediately, though, we had a room of about 65 to 75 people that were here, room just got very quiet. And everyone started nodding and the entire room changed from, what we're doing all encompasses the same theme. The value of a strategic plan is that it gives us a path, but underlying that path were two really strong words that were consistent from our first meeting to our last was, we believe. And that theme kind of took over and when we started sitting back and saying, well, it's time to look at a mission, we realized we already had one. And I think if you go back to the theoretical development of the whole process and the whole reason you have a mission is, your mission is, without those core concepts, you can't do the plan. And a lot of times, if you look at mission statements, there are lots of fluffy words all strung together. There's lots of terms that are thrown in there. They sound really good, but they only sound good. They don't give a lot of direction. And I'm really proud that we ended with the mission of, we believe. Because it shows that in order to accomplish any of the framework, the statement of, we believe, has to be a part of the process. So I think along there, the we believe statements started expanding towards some of the vision of, and I think they really capsulated it into, we believe that no excuses, only results is what's going to drive certainly the beginning of this plan. So a little bit about how we got there. We started with our planning committee. We thought we'd start with a group of seven or eight people, or 17. So we got a group of 17 that was really there to help guide the process and make decisions and help try to bring things kind of through the filter so that we could have a little bit of direction without trying to herd cats in a room and try to find all these different directions to add more direction. So from there, the steering committee decided we wanted to have lots of input and we decided on doing strategic workshops with all the constituent groups. So we had a group of certified staff. We had a session for community members. We had a session review at the school committee. We invited high school students, middle school students. We met at McCourt Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School and took input. We altogether had over 225 people participate in one of those initial workshops. And it was the same workshop that you all participated in, that we did an analysis based on SWOT analysis, what do we do well? What are our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities? And we looked at, based on those opportunities, what are things we could do? What are opportunities? What are directions we should be focused in on? From all those opportunities, we ended up with 157 unique opportunities. We had lots of opportunities that crossed over. I think what Mr. Mitchell and I thought was very interesting is a lot of the groups had many same themes. So independently, about 157 opportunities were created on a spreadsheet. We went back to the steering committee and said, we have 157, can we come up with, can we group these into a specific number of themes? We boiled those down to four themes and then went back into an opportunity workshop that we divided up into four themes, having representatives from all the constituent groups that then focused in on the four themes that Mr. Mitchell will talk more about. So back to our vision and some of our statements. And I think what really became kind of that underlying drive were the statements that we believe, that, and you can see all the different concepts that flow out of the we believe statement, that I think add a nice direction, a nice tone, that when you look at the plan, all of these things are necessary ingredients for that plan to be successful. What I think was also important in our process was being conscious that RIDE had developed their strategic plan for the state. While we didn't want to take RIDE's plan and just add and tack our plan on top of it, we also wanted to make sure that it was consistent with the plan that RIDE had developed and the themes. And I think our four themes and our outcomes fit very close into the direction that RIDE had taken. So our four focus areas became school structure and organization, wellness and whole child, funding and fiscal management, and community and communication. And if you look into RIDE's plan, while RIDE talks certainly significantly about communication, they also talked about how we look at school structure, how we look at the whole child. So as we developed our plan, I think it's very much in line with RIDE's, without just being a repeat of it. We didn't just take theirs and say, oh, theirs is good, let's do it here. But we looked at that and said, I think these are consistent and they support each other. So a couple of things we just wanted to point out as we went through, some of the themes that developed individually. When we met with the administrative group, one of the things they were strongly focused on was communication and transitions. I think Mr. Mitchell talked about that in his school opening on some of those key areas that I think administrators were highly focused on. Parents talked a lot about communication between Malt, between the departments, between teachers, and between the students, between the students and the parents. That was a strong theme that developed. There was a lot of concern about transitions between elementary into middle and middle into high school. Our certified staff was very focused on, once we develop a theme, can we bring it to the end? Their focus was, we have lots of ideas, we love all of our ideas, but we'd like to be able to go from the beginning to the end and see one come to end and not adding things as we go along and never finishing. Students were, was fascinating that we had a chance to meet with middle school students and high school students. Our students love our schools, they love our teachers, and it was so strong and invigorating, I think, for us to meet with them and see how satisfied and how engaged they were in the process, how they were doing visual maps and how they really took to the process. And I think what stood out to me as one of the most important feedback was our high school group that said, we like the concept of a screen-free day. And I sat on our strategic planning board as a parent two cycles ago before Chromebooks and we said, we need one-on-one computing, we really want to bring computing into the school. And it was interesting to see some of the students say, we certainly, we strongly believe in the Chromebooks, but we don't want to become overly reliant on Chromebooks. And perhaps a screen-free day would be an appropriate opportunity that came out through the process. So all those themes were kind of incorporated into final language. And our community talked a lot about communication. And you would expect from our community leaders, that included members of our town council and members throughout the community, their focus was often on communication, hearing the good, as well as some of the negativity. But really, they wanted a stronger connection to hearing about what things were and how they were going on. So I handed over to talk a little bit more detail about the plan.
Thank you, Peter. I just want to repeat the quote that was on the first slide, which is, and it's Sheryl Sandberg. I believe Sheryl Sandberg is the CEO of Facebook. Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure that impact lasts in your absence. So, you know, that's something that we talk about all the time. This is not about any one person who is having a profound and significant impact on the organization. This is true collaboration. And if Tony and Tina and Alex and Rachel and I, along with the building principals, if we're doing our jobs the way that we should be doing them, the good work should continue long after we're gone. So linked to that is what I, is something that I feel is really important. And that is our responsibility as district leaders to identify and nurture teacher leaders in the district. And I believe that we've done a pretty good job with it. I mean, you all have met some pretty impressive people that have been promoted from the ranks that are helping us move in a positive direction. And the data is clear. We are showing some, I think, impressive improvement in student performance. And I should also say that we will never be satisfied until we are absolutely where we need to be. And I'm not so sure that we'll ever be totally satisfied. So let's talk about those four areas of strategic emphasis. As Peter mentioned, one is school structure and organization. The second is wellness and the whole child. Third is communication. And the fourth is proper funding and fiscal management. I put this quote in because I love this quote. And it's so true. If we create a culture where every teacher believes they need to improve, not because they're not good enough, but because they can be even better, there's no limit to what we can achieve. So one thing that I mention all the time, and I don't know that anyone could argue with me on this, and that is, first of all, we have to acknowledge, we have some outstanding teachers in this district. You know, everyone is working hard, their hearts are in the right place, they are making a good faith effort to help us get better. I'm convinced of it. Are there people who could be doing better? Of course. And it's our responsibility to hold one another accountable. But who would argue that if we expect students to get better and improve in their performance, then we as adults, and I'm including myself, that we have to get better too? Because I talk about the definition of insanity all the time, right? We know that if we keep doing it the way that we've been doing it, we can expect pretty much the same results. So we have a responsibility to get better and when we stop is when it's time for us to get out of the profession. Okay, so this is, I know that you all have this on your screens. This is a quick summary of what we have developed as a group on school structure and organization. And it really does encompass a number of things. For example, just to highlight some of the things on this page, we know that school structure and organization, what could be more important than having a conversation around student enrollment and the possibility of re-districting? We have a responsibility, given the fact that we're busting at the seams in some places, then we have to consider maybe realigning the neighborhood schools, the districts that we have created. We know that that is not an easy thing to do. We know that parents choose to live in specific areas because they know that their child is going to get an excellent education based on the performance of the school. But we have a responsibility to equally distribute the student population so that we can best meet their needs and the needs of the district from an efficiency and financial standpoint. But we also have a responsibility to make sure that every child is getting a high-quality education in every single classroom in this district. So everything that we do is data-driven, research and evidence-based. We're not going to do it if we don't have the proof that what we want to accomplish is proven in research in some way. And a great example of that is SRSD. We would not have chosen to pursue that as a district had we not had evidence that it was the right thing to do. And we are focused on, and we talked about this a little bit in our meeting prior to this one, that we, that we expect all of our schools to set reasonable learning targets for students over the next three years. We want them to be ambitious, but we also want them to be realistic. And we all need something to strive for. So we have had conversations with our administrative team on setting ambitious targets in the areas of ELA, math, and we're, science is in sort of a unique situation because we're making the transition to the next generation science standards and we're going to be, kids are going to be getting a new, the students are going to be getting a new assessment. I don't know, is it this year, Tony? Piloting this year and implementing the year after. So we're really excited, looking at RTI on this particular slide. We are very fortunate to have Nicole Baca working with us. I believe that that will also have a positive impact on student performance, K-12. She has an incredible reputation in the state and we are very fortunate indeed to have her working with us on our team. And I, as I have mentioned many times before, from a professional development standpoint, I believe that we have done a really good job of providing meaningful professional development to all staff. We want it to be specific to the content areas that everybody teaches. Like, for example, I don't know, we would not expect art or phys ed teachers to be in professional development on SRSD. We need to provide them with content-specific professional development that will impact their practice. That's our goal, is to... That's our goal, is to provide professional development that will impact their practice. And the research is clear, in order for, in order for a teacher to be in a position where they can actually change their practice, they need 50 to 100 hours of professional development in a given content area in order to change their practice that will positively impact student performance. And I keep coming back to SRSD, great example. We have been doing this for several years now, piloted, which we do because of our financial situation. We don't just, we don't, well, first of all, we, I don't think of jumping in, having everybody jump in and at the same time is the best way to do things. So we have been very thoughtful in the way that we have started these new programs. Again, Thinking Maths, good example. Blended Learning, good example. SRSD, good example. We have piloted. People get excited about sharing that. And I believe that because of the way that we've gone about it, we are reaping, students are reaping the benefit of the thoughtful professional development plan that we, that we have in place. So enough said about school structure and organization unless someone has a question. You know, I said to my colleagues, there's a reason why Ted Talks for almost 17 minutes, so I'll, I'm mindful of that. Oh, thank you. I'm probably on 16. Okay. Wellness and the, and whole child, this is, I must say, everything is important, but this one is particularly important to me. We have spent a lot of time over the last several years talking about mental health-related issues. And, you know, this particular, this particular area of focus is critically important and I think more important now than ever because we know, as we've discussed, anxiety and depression are skyrocketing these days. So not only do we have a responsibility to teach students content, you know, we need to teach them math, science, social studies, you know, health, phys ed, art, music, all of those things. But if, if a student's social health and their emotional health and their physical health, that health triangle, if all three of those areas are not aligned or balanced in some way, then it could, one of those things not being right could potentially impact those other areas. So if I'm having issues with anxiety and depression, might it affect me socially and/or physically? There is evidence to support that it does. So we need to make sure that we find balance in the lives of our students. And there is every, you know, one of the hot topics in education now, it comes across my desk every day, the online newsletters that I get from EdWeek and ASCD. There was an article today, in fact, I brought it to share with you. But scientists are, are sharing the importance of focusing on social-emotional learning as well. So part of our challenge is to figure out a way to fit it in. And we're having conversations about a social-emotional learning curriculum. And we're also having conversations about whose responsibility is it to teach that particular content? And it really has to be everybody, and you know what? I'm sure you all can relate to this. This is, depression and anxiety is not just an issue that is affecting students. It is affecting all of us. And, and as we've discussed, there is a link between screen time and an increase in those two areas of mental health. So we, we have some work to do here. We need to provide some professional development. We need to find a curriculum that is, that is, that we can use. It's going to require probably some, not probably, definitely some additional resources. Again, this is not just for students, it's also for staff. We all feel pretty strongly ourselves about the importance of taking care of ourselves because I've said a million times that if I take care of myself and I'm in good health, I believe I'm a better husband, I believe I'm a better father, and I hope I'm a better educator. Because I, I think we're better at what we do if we are in good health than if we weren't. Okay, so I think you all get the picture on that. All right, communication is something that we always need to get better at. We acknowledge our responsibility to get better at communicating. We've talked about things like master calendars. We need to avoid things like having two open houses on the same night. There is, we need to respond, we have a responsibility to make sure that things like that don't happen. We've talked about branding. We've talked about things like, you know, should there be a rivalry between the North and the South? You know, we are one district and we need to be proud of the fact that we are one district. So the way that we communicate who we are, I think, is critically important. So there are, there's some very specific information in each one of these areas that we want to focus our attention on. We want to be a district, and I, I think it's happening now because despite the fact that there are, there are two school systems in the town of Cumberland, we still are finding that lots of families are moving into town. And I, I mean, who would argue that families aren't moving into town because of the quality of education that we are delivering here? So how do we continue to share that message that we're providing a really quality education for the students in this town? We, we also talked about, and we talked about this a little earlier too in a meeting, about how we want to do what we can to break down the divide between the North and the South. And it's really interesting, you know, I heard about it when I came here six years ago. And it is, there, there is definitely something there. And so our challenge is, what can we do as a system to break down those barriers between the North and the South? I'm not suggesting for a moment that that is going to be easy, but we believe that we have a responsibility to try to do something about that. There's been a lot of conversation about standards-based grading. One of the things that Tony Demana is doing with everybody in the district, he has a team that is really focusing attention on standards-based grading. We know that we have some work to do there. In fact, I believe you had a meeting today on standards-based grading. So we have a K-12 committee of folks who are working on this. We know we have some work to do and already I think some really exciting things are happening. So that's another thing that we need to focus our attention on. So, you know, one of the things that we, we, I don't know what will happen, but, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, like, just an example, in Westerly, it's a little different. There's only one middle school, one high school, one middle school, four elementary schools. And they're Westerly Bulldogs. Everybody's a Westerly Bulldog. So that's, I don't believe that that's the case here. You know, every school has its own identity. I'm not suggesting that we are going to change that, but I think we need to have a conversation about, you know, will, you know, one brand bring some unity to us? So that is, that is something that we, we need to talk about. Okay. And of course, proper funding is always an issue. I think we had a good year last year in that we got more money from the town than we have ever received before. But we know that we still have a lot of ground to cover and we have to make up for some years where there was little or no additional funding. So we're a little behind the eight ball right now. But last year was a good start and we have a lot of people working hard to do more to support the school system financially. And I, I think the work that was done during the budget cycle last time where we really got out and provided information to parents so that, and the community, but especially parents, so that they could really understand where Cumberland was in their spending in relationship to other districts. And I think that was an eye-opening experience. And I, I think as a result of your advocacy and the work that we have done as a leadership team made a difference. You know, when you have 400 people, pro-education folks, sitting in an audience demanding more money, I can't imagine that it wouldn't have an influence on the people that make those decisions. So we need to continue that. And because we know, we're not unrealistic in our expectations, but we know that with more resources and the vision that we have for what we want to do moving forward, we know that we're going to do, we're going to significantly improve the performance of our students and staff. So we just need to make sure that we continue to work really hard on that. We talk all the time about how can we be in a position to take advantage of grant opportunities? So, you know, I, in fact, I was going to, I have an idea and I was going to connect with someone today on that and I just, I just got distracted. But we, we have some ideas about what we can do. And I know that some of you have had ideas as well. We need to be resourceful and figure out what we can do to, some people are highly skilled at that. And I believe that that, you know, being an effective grant writer is, requires a unique skill. We need to make sure that we find a way, we have to find a way to take advantage of money that is out there to support the work that's happening in the district. And, you know, to sort of come full circle, you know, as, as Dr. Langton said, you know, we sort of really rallied around those words, "we believe." And when I met with all eight, I met the staff at all eight schools on Orientation Day, this was the day before students started, I talked about the fact that those words are critically important to, not the success of the strategic plan, but the success of our students. And as we've discussed earlier, and we've discussed many times before, that unless every single solitary person believes that the kids at BF Norton can perform as well as the students in some of the highest-performing elementary schools in the state, unless we believe, I mean, really believe that they're, that they can do it, it's not going to happen. And unless we have the kinds of expectations for our students that the parents and staff at North Cumberland and community have for their kids, unless we have those same high expectations, we're not going to reach them. So, and you know what? You know, I, I know that I, I can tell when I'm talking to people who believes me and who doesn't. But you know what? We're going to hammer away at that. We do, all the time. And over time, people start to believe it. When they get results, they start to believe it. So those non-believers become believers. Doesn't happen overnight, but it's something that we talk about all the time. And another thing that we've been talking about all the time as a leadership team is the strategic plan. We talked about it during our retreat. We've spent the last year pulling it all together. We talked about it Tuesday at our leadership team meeting. And the expectation is that every single, every single school in the district is going to be aligning their work to the strategic plan. If we don't expect that, why have a strategic plan? So they've already done. I've been in buildings and I've seen, like, you know, Peter came up with this great idea where, you know what? Every school should be coming up with their "we believe" statements. So they have, it's already been done in several schools. So there is this movement that's happening. And the thing that we need to stress, and I'm going to, you know, our people are going to, you know, I'm going to make people crazy because I'm going to be talking about it so much, that in order for us to get where we want to go, and that's our goal, it's in the plan, is to be in the top five school districts in the state, performing in the top five at every level, elementary, middle, and high school. That's where we want to be. We want to be there within three years. And, and we're knocking on the door already, believe it or not, at a couple of our levels. So we are committed to making this an active document, as Dr. Langton said. As he also says, we do not want this to be a museum piece that sits on a shelf. It's not going to. So we have a responsibility to talk about this over and over and over again and hold one another accountable to making sure that this happens. So this is a call to action, which pretty much I just summarized. I don't know if there's anything that my colleagues want to add. Tony, I don't know if there's, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you and I talk, I mean, you know, the same language. Spent a lot of time on this and I, I think that we have created a document that is going to get us where we need to be and I hope inspire people to do good work. And I think you've heard me say this before, but I'm going to say it again. And I've been telling people this quote. And I think I shared it with you, but it's worth it for you. There are three kinds of educators. Those who complain, and you know what? We all know who they are. Those who explain, where I share my content knowledge with the children sitting in front of them. Those who complain, those who explain, and those who inspire. And the question I ask is, which one do you think you are? And in our conversations with Dr. Langton, he said, and which one do you want to be? Which one, if you think about it, we all fall into one of those categories. Which one do I think I am? And which one do I want to be? So I would certainly hope, and I hope, I hope that I'm, I'm not sure that I am, but I hope I'm the kind of educator that inspires. And I think that that would be something that everyone would strive for. So that is, in a nutshell, there's a lot of work to be done. It's already happened. And all of the principals are working hard already and doing their part in making this happen in this school. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. Is that longer than 17 minutes, Alex? Is he awake? Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Dr. Langton. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Sure.
So I think the important thing with the strategic plan is that you have, what's your ultimate end goal? So when we sit here at the end of 2020, how will we know what we've achieved? And it sounds like the end goal you're putting forth is that we will be in the top five school districts in every area.
Every level.
So that, so I got that right, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then I think the other piece that can be challenging with the strategic plan is then making it actionable each year to say, what are the steps we need to take every year and making sure we're aligned with that to then ultimately get to that end goal? So I know you've got a plan here, you know, working with each principal in school to make sure they put that in place. And then the same on your end. So I think it would be good for the school committee, you know, and we kind of talked a little bit about this earlier, but to have, you know, a mid-year update or an annual about this earlier, but to have, you know, a mid-year update or an annual update that says, here's what we achieve, here's what we want to achieve to help move our strategic plan forward in this year. And then, hey, did we do it? And if we didn't, well, here's what's going to carry over. And if we did, hey, great, here's what we're going to do next year. So I think that's an important part of strategic plans. And like you both are saying, in terms of keeping it alive and keeping focus on it, it takes effort to keep focus on a strategic plan. And so I look forward to seeing how, you know, we, well, and also with the support that you need from us in order to ensure that you can meet the goals and objectives you have in the strategic plan. And so the more we know about it and the more we stay in close contact on it, then the better we can support you in it. But it, it's, I think it is inspiring. I think it is something that each of the school principals hopefully find inspiring too. And I hope what they put forth in their own belief statements inspires their own, you know, faculty around what they're trying to achieve. So congratulations on a lot of really good work here.
Point is well taken about periodic check-ins. I think that's a good, we'll make sure that, that we build that in so that we share periodically.
Welcome.
I think the school district has made leaps and bounds when it comes to the financing of the school district. Not just this school committee, but past school committees as well started the process. We're just capitalizing on it. And Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Pignano and others that attended the state house or town council meetings. And we explained our position, where we need to be and how we're going to get there. And I think it's, the, the plan here incorporates that as well, that we just need to push that forward again this year coming up as well. We want more funding to get us to the state average. And I think this plan helps us bring all the parties together to help develop the plan. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I want to say, I was part of a meeting that you referred to earlier in this room where you gave the speech about "we believe." And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed because I thought that Dr. Langton might have had a hidden video of that. Because after you gave that speech, I said, why didn't any of us film it? And it really was truly inspiring. And it changed the conversation. It, it took it from being a task to, to being fun and exciting to, to put this together, to help put this together and to, to think about what the future of the district could be and where, you know, where we're headed, basically. So I, I, I would commend you for that. I think that was a turning point in the, in putting this together. And I appreciate you doing that. And I appreciate the work that you both have put into this too. So I think we have a vote on this now, unless anyone has any, anything else to say on the strategic plan. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion that we approve that the plan is outlined by Dr. Langton and we approve it.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the 2017 to 2020 strategic plan. Seconded by Mr. Hess. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your support.
Sure.
When will that get posted to the website?
Next up is new business. The first item is discussion and our vote to approve the 2017, 2018 school bus routes. Now, last week, we had a meeting to talk about bus routes. And a takeaway from that meeting was that we, we acknowledged that the bus routes were not finalized and that Durham was going to make tweaks. So I think we're not ready to approve these. That's my opinion. We have until, I believe, the end of the month to approve them. There are 30 days after the school starts. So we could not approve them tonight and approve them in two weeks. But I leave that up to the committee. So we could table it tonight is what I'm saying.
I would move that we table the approval of the bus routes. Plus, we are still waiting on the approval from the Cumberland Police Department as well. They normally approve our routes, stop locations, et cetera. So if that, if we're gonna do this in two weeks, I would hope that we would have something from the Cumberland Police Department.
That's a question for Mr. Mitchell. I don't know if you heard the question, but have the police department, did they approve? So you're talking about the current routes that are on the website. Were they approved by the police?
Yes.
Okay. So if we change them, they'll need to, the police will need to approve the change.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
So Mr. Demodica made a motion to table the 2017, 18 school bus routes. Mr. Fiorello, seconds for discussion.
I forget what day it is today. So I don't even know what day it was. Mr. Mitchell and I did do a, a bus run on bus 26 going from, it starts at McCourt Middle School after dropping off the middle school students and then begins its run to pick up students in the reservoir area and as far as, as far up as Adams Farm. To drop kids off at community school. It was a beautiful day. What day was that? Was it Tuesday? Wednesday. Really? Ooh. It's been a long week. It was a beautiful day. It was optimal conditions and the bus run was essentially 45 minutes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Exactly 43 minutes.
So you can imagine any kind of traffic problems, weather conditions could easily push that to an hour, maybe plus. Part of the problem in that section of town is that most of the roads are 15 miles an hour, which the buses have to adhere to, of course. Roads are very narrow. There are areas where cars have to, like, pull off to the shoulder of the road, if there is a shoulder of the road, just so the bus can pass. The roads are very, very windy. I mean, it, there's no good way to get up into that area and out again efficiently and cut that time down. Mr. Mitchell and I have actually discussed a couple of small changes that we were going to discuss with Durham. We tried to maybe shave off a few minutes. We don't know what the effect on another bus route would be in that case. Also, Mr. Mitchell and I have been involved with some parents about a bus stop on the other end of town on High Street where we'd like to maybe see a change in the bus stop, which would alter the route, of course. We don't know exactly what that would involve, but hopefully we can work out. And I'm still getting reports from parents from different schools about late buses, you know, buses showing up at schools much later than they should be to pick up students. So I'm sure that we're all going to have still some work to do. So I fully, you know, support postponing this.
Just to add that, I, I think that Durham said that they would provide us with times of the school, the, the buses arriving at the schools. And I, I know we want to give them some time to run those. So hopefully we can get that before approving them. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other, any other discussion on this before we vote?
Is there a law or is it just a matter of policy? I should know that, but as far as when the bus routes get?
Thirty days.
Yeah. We're going to be reviewing that in detail anyway, so that we actually have a change.
And I know last year, we approved them in October. So we'd like to adhere to our policy, but if we can't, if for some reason we can't approve them, we could work on that. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six, nothing. Thank you. Next item is discussion and our vote to approve appointments of two Cumberland School Committee members to the Committee on Educational Funding and Development. Now, this is the, a new committee that was formed by the town council. I, I forget the exact membership. I believe there are two town council members, two school members, two Blackson Valley Prep members, one superintendent appointee, one mayor appointee, and three members of the public. I think that's right. So I know we've talked a little bit about this. Does anybody have any motion to make or? We have to make this appointment by the end of the month? Yes.
I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Hess.
You can, does he know?
He does know.
We have, we're appointing two people. Okay. A motion to appoint Mr. Hess made by Mr. Fiorello and seconded by Mrs. Friedman and Mr. Demodica. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six, nothing. Good luck, Steve.
Okay. I would move that we appoint Mr. Denon.
You don't want to appoint Mr. Hisal. No, just kidding. Thank you. We, Mr. Demodica makes a motion to appoint Mr. Denon and seconded by Mr. Hess. All those in favor? That passes six, nothing as well. So we've made our appointments. I know, Mr. Mitchell, you have an appointment to make. I, I don't know the process for that. I think you can send a letter or email to, to the chair. Great. Any other questions on that? Those are going to be open meetings and any member of the school committee can come to those meetings. And they're going to be looking for members of the public to submit, I guess, applications to be on the committee, to the school, to the town council. We, we're not going to have any say in that. But if you know anyone who would be great on that, I encourage you to have them apply. There, there will be something in the Valley Breeze about it, I imagine. I, I think, in my memory from that, that meeting last week at the town council. Okay. Next up is discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for 2017, 18 school year. Mr. Mitchell or?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I am recommending that the committee approve 54 requests this evening for home instruction for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demodica makes a motion. Mr. Fiorello, seconds for discussion.
Demodica, is this more than usual the first time around or? I know we do them.
It's typical. I, I did discuss this with Mr. Mitchell and Lori Jenks, my assistant, and it's typical of this time of year to have this type of volume at the beginning of the year for home instruction.
Do we have a motion and a second? Oh, Mr. Fiorello. Sorry.
Mr. Demodica, I just want to be sure that the parents that are choosing the homeschool their students or their children are aware that their students can still partake in after-school activities and our various sporting programs or particular activities.
They received the policy from, from my office.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six, nothing. Next up is discussion and our vote to approve second reading of new policy. Is that right? We're approving the second reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Fiorello.
Well, just to clarify, any new policy needs to have two readings before a vote. This would be the second reading and we will be voting on this. This is the K5 appeals process, which I mentioned briefly earlier, is just laying out what has been essentially common practice anyways, but we felt that we need to have it actually written down and codified. This is modeled after a successful policy in North Kingston.
There, there are a couple of other districts that have something similar. Yeah, it's, it's, it's short and sweet. That's what I wanted to.
Yeah, it's, it's a one page. I mean, if you, I'm sure you've all read it. It's very, very short, very clear. And I would move passage of the new policy, K5, the appeals process.
Fiorello moves passage of K5, the appeals process. Second, seconded by Mrs. Friedman. All of those in favor? That passes six, nothing. Thank you. Next up is personnel recommendations. Mrs. Fogel.
There it goes. Okay. So I have a few personnel recommendations for this evening. I have two leave of absences, or request the advice and consent to the school committee on the FML leave of absence of Jamie Sutherland, kindergarten teacher at Garvin Memorial School, effective today, September 14th, 2017, with an anticipated return date of December 11th, 2017. And Kevin Sutherland, APE, PE health teacher at BF Norton Elementary School, effective today, with an anticipated return date of October 2nd, 2017.
We have two leave of, leave of, leaves of absence. The pleasure of the committee. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Seconded by Mr. Hess. All those in favor? That passes six, nothing.
And then I just have a few appointments for you. This almost rounds, rounds out all of our hiring. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following appointments. Sean Boucher, special education teacher at McCourt Middle School, effective September 14th, 2017. He is full-time and a step five. Kristen Markot, music teacher at Garvin Memorial School, effective Monday, September 18th, 2017. She has a .5 and a step five. And Brian Rego, who is the APE, or is adaptive physical education teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. This will be effective September 25th. He is full-time and is step five.
Thank you. So we have three appointments for new employees. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve by Mrs. Goggan. Seconded by Mr. Demodica. All of those in favor? Aye. That passes six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, our school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Demodica.
I got two. I had the opportunity to attend the Garvin and the McCourt PTO first kickoff meetings of the year. Things went very well. It was a good crowd and we're hoping that it becomes that way, that more parents get involved. I also had the opportunity to notarize about a dozen volunteer forms as well. So making it easy for the parents to come to the meeting and, and get it done. So, but the new policy that the state has about getting it done yearly. So went off a good, good bang and we'll see what happens going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's for Denon, if I may. When I was doing my long-winded presentation on the strategic plan, I, I mentioned several members of the leadership team. And I neglected, and I appreciate Tony reminding me of this, that I neglected to mention, you know, Mike Chandler, who is, anyone that knows Mike knows how, I mean, his institutional knowledge is invaluable. So Mike, I apologize for, for not mentioning you. You get into trouble when you start mentioning names. And so anyway, I, I want to publicly apologize because you know how I feel about you. You're a credible, an important person in our, on our team.
Anyone else? I have a couple items that I wanted to talk about. There's an article in the Valley Breeze today about new condominiums going up, off Mendon Road. I think it was, the number was 107 condos. And it's funny because there's no mention in the article about any impact on schools. And I, I'm sure you agree with me that there will be an impact. And we know that this would be currently, as, as the districts are drawn today, in the Ashton District. We know that Ashton was one of the schools that had, was bursting at the seams, I think you use your terminology, Mr. Mitchell. So we, we need to request from the town that they do an assessment of what this will do to the schools and let us know. I know they're worried about traffic. I know that's the primary concern of the neighbors, but we, we are worried about that, what it will do to the district. So hopefully we can work on that. The, the second item I have is that Mr. Mitchell and I and Mr. Jesus went to a ride, a, a session with Ride earlier this week to talk about the building report that was released yesterday to the public. If you haven't had a chance to, I encourage you to read it. I encourage everyone to look at it. One of the things that jumped out to me, and I think it's going to jump out to a lot of people, is the utilization of our schools, which is, I believe it's about 77%. And when you start digging into the numbers, you, you learn pretty quickly that it's not an exact science, to put it mildly. And actually, I have, if I can find it, Community School, it says that it had a, when they did the study, it had an enrollment of 572 students. And the capacity, there was a utilization of 76%. And they said that it should be able to fit 828 students. Well, the, the reality is that there are 628 students there today. And I don't think any one of us really wants to add any more students to communities. We know that that's another one of those schools that's bursting at the seams. So, sure.
That's a great point about community because quite honestly, if we had over 800 students in that school, we would have to start lunch around nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. So not only that, classrooms would be chock full and busing would be more of a nightmare than it is today. So that, that was the first school that I looked at. I, I looked at the overall enrollment numbers for the district too, and they didn't seem right either. They, they were not as wildly different as that, as communities were. But I think we just need to keep this in mind when we talk to people about this study. I, I don't think we're going to get these numbers changed. They're not going to come back and reevaluate the district. But we need to know our own numbers. And we need to know what we think the capacities are, or what the, what the administration has decided capacities are for the schools. Because it's going to be an important part of the conversation going forward when we talk about getting the resources we need to run a successful district. The great thing about this report is about Cumberland's report in particular. There were very few priority one issues for Cumberland. There were a small handful. If you look at other districts, there were, they had millions of dollars worth in priority one. We, I don't know what the dollar figure is, but it's relatively small. And I think that, and priority two as well is not that big compared to other districts. And those are the, the highest priorities. I think that's a testament to the work that administration has been doing. I think that's a testament to the work that administration has been doing and the support the town has given us with the health and safety money that we, we've received over the last several years. So I, I think there's some good and some bad here, that that's certainly good. The bad is the numbers are a little iffy on the, on the enrollment side. Having said that though, there are millions of dollars worth. There is multiple, I, I forget what the total is for Cumberland too, but, you know, each school would benefit from millions of dollars worth of it. I think that's safe to say. And that's a big thing to tackle. And I know that we, we all want to tackle it, but it's going to take time and work. So I, I appreciate everyone's effort. You're going to say something? Mr. Fiorello, I put you on the spot.
I think the biggest problem I have with the way that Ride puts together these numbers is that a portion of it is at least, is done by total square footage of the building. And that includes every square foot of the building. Stuff that we would never be able to utilize as a classroom. It seems like a pretty simple thing to walk into a building, figure out how many classrooms we could legitimately have and figure out how many students we actually want to have in those buildings.
Right, I think that's our job. Like, I think they, they've, they've sort of set their standard. We don't have to meet their standard. So we, we will do that, that work. Mr. DeMonica, you going to say something?
We have over eighty million dollars worth of work that needs to be done between all our buildings. And I don't think Ride, the state takes into consideration the amount of growth Cumberland is still going to have going forward here. We're not going to fit all these children in these, in our schools. It's not going to happen. You know, we're going to end up building a new school at this end of town sometime. It's just, it has to be. We can't stop the growth.
Yeah, so one of the themes from the report is that Ride is pushing is the concept of newer and fewer schools. So they, they are encouraging, and at this point, it's a mystery as, as to how it's going to get done. But they're encouraging newer schools and fewer schools. So we understand what that means, right? You know, they're proposing you could take two elementary schools and replace it with one, for, just for example. And you, you have a brand new school that's state of the art. It's good for the next, you know, fifty or sixty years and you're, you'll be able to close two old schools.
Not in Cumberland when you're the last district in the state that has funding from the town. They're just not going to come up and give us thirty, forty million dollars more to build a new school. Not going to happen. The best scenario would be to combine the middle schools together into one. Then we don't have a north-south divide. We have a true middle school system. It's not going to happen in this town. The, the people here just don't want to bite the bullet. We're backwards. We don't even fund our, our community correctly with the, you know, pay now and taxes later.
You know, another point is, I like, I'd also like to know where all the money's going to come from. The state obviously is not going to be able to come up with any of it. You know, they say they can, I don't know how they're going to do that. But if you, also in the report, while they're talking about figuring out a way to come up with the money to fix all the repairs that all these schools and all these towns are going to need, they also throw in there, they want to figure out a path for the charter schools to own their buildings, which is going to cost just as much money probably. So I don't know where any of this money's coming from. And that's what they need to figure out. That's on the state.
Right, they're, they're talking about a mix of, of sources and including finding a dedicated revenue stream, which is unknown at this time. It's not like they could add one percent for the sales tax and, you know, something like that would need, could be needed, I think.
Maybe they want to merge schools so their child schools have more places to go.
Yeah, I didn't see that in the slideshow. Anyone else? Okay, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Mr. DeMonica. Second. Second by Mrs. Friedman. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six, nothing. Oh, five to one. And we are adjourned at eight fifty, even though Mr. Fiorello did not want to adjourn.